Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna try and get that email out today.
Did you hear anything about Harry's son?
I talked to Harry yesterday. He was teaching a class out there.
You mean the carpenter?
And he had heart attack.
Yeah, heart attack. I was wondering if he was still alive.
Yeah, heart attack. In fact, thank you everybody for coming this morning to join us for a short prayer. Vicious heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings you bestow upon us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here and lead the county. Dear Lord, we just pray that the decisions we make here will be the best for the most people in the county, and the decisions we make will be pleasing unto you. We ask, dear Lord, you to lay your hand upon our law enforcement officers and help keep them safe. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Declare this meeting open so join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do have a pretty lengthy agenda this morning, but we'll move through it just as quick as we can. The minutes of the last meeting been circulated among the commissioners. I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make that a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? We also have a claims docket that's been circulated among the commissioners. I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims.
I'll also make that a motion.
Second. All in favor? First thing on our agenda this morning is Nicole Noe with the update on the opioid funds.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I had come to you before and let you know that we were going to open up the opioid funds for applications for grants for individuals in the county who wanted to utilize the opioid funds for other projects that fit within the requirement. Just making sure that all the copies are on here, but I don't think that they are. It's quality. This is the one from the hospital. But she would not make ones from the Sheriff's Department, so I don't see copies. So Brian had requested that we help purchase a medication take-back box for the hospital, and it went before the J-Rac Council on the 15th, and J-Rac approved this expenditure. The medication take-back box is an approved item under the restricted funds for purchase, so we would be able to utilize the restricted funds to help them purchase the medication take-back box. And J-Rac approved that. I'm just bringing it to your attention, that's one of the things that we're going to be purchasing. The other one is a very large one. The Sheriff's Department had came to me and asked me about LCC money to help purchase a new K-9 unit. And I said, "Well, I'm pretty sure we could probably pay for that underneath opioid funds." Unfortunately, a K-9 unit is not allowed to purchase underneath the restricted funds, but it isn't allowed to purchase under the unrestricted funds. So I took that to J-Rac with the help of the Sheriff on the 15th, too, and they approved the expenditure of those funds.
Questions?
Well, I haven't read through all this. It says, "Seeking funds to help add a K-9," so are they going to provide some of their own funds, too, or did I just haven't read part of it?
We've already received one grant, Commissioner Hareage, from the Indiana Railroad for $2,500, and we do have some funds that we could work with. Obviously, we'd like to get as much grant money as we can, because there'll still be other things that aren't detailed there that'll be involved in, like the kennel that's already taken care of. It's a big deal to put one together. I think that we're gonna have to probably come up with over the next year another $5,000 to $6,000 on top of this, if not more, on top of it. So we have basically, out of $2,500 from Indiana Railroad, we are waiting to hear from...
RMC, or what?
Yeah, no, RMC gives $2,500. But it is an expensive program. We're not going... Before, we've had three dogs. Three dogs are sometimes worth what you paid for them. We're looking to do something different this time and get a dog with a guarantee. A dog, just a dog alone, you're looking at about $9,500, if I recall correctly, with a dog with a guarantee. There is definitely a need in our county. We've not had a K-9 program for a few years. It's something that we really need to get back working on the county and do some things that need to be done. Most of our people have a drug nexus that are in our jail, and certain things, you know, an officer can detect on his own, but there's a lot of things that go remain undetected by an officer, either by, you can't see it or you can't smell it. Most of our more prevalent and dangerous street drugs, an officer is not going to smell. Marijuana, we're not even going to train this dog for marijuana. Typically, if it's in the car, you can smell it, and if it comes to the point, and I think, I hate to say it, but probably on the horizon, it'll become legalized in Indiana, and you can't untrain a dog. But most marijuana cases, a deputy can smell it. So, but it's a big hurdle to get this going. We definitely could use the financial help to get it going.
So you just have, you have one dog? Is that what I understood?
That's where we're gonna start with. I would eventually like to add at least one more. We're gonna also train it for article searches. A lot of times, we're looking for balance or different things. A dog can be multiple disciplined and then work on tracking. Some dogs are good at, and there's times we do tracking, some dogs are better at that than others. But our main thing will be canine detection and... We've never had, excuse me, we've never had a patrol dog, but here a few months ago, I was underneath a trailer dragging a guy out that had multiple felony warrants. I would have much rather had a canine under that program instead of me. And unfortunately, we see that kind of stuff happen in Green County. They don't want to go to jail, we want them to go to jail. You know, you gotta figure out how to get it done. You hope that the canine never gets hers, but I'd rather send a canine under there on the long lead than me or one of my guys. But that's what we're looking into, the reality of our world.
Are you gonna kennel the dog down at the jail?
No, it would be at the handler's property. So we got some concrete donated, got some stuff bought at a reduced price from TSC. Had some thoughts about talking, some of the, they make the mini barn for mini kennels, or if you change handle, or you could just move the kennel from spot to spot. Right now, we want to start with one, get it going, and then we try and work on a second one.
You've already selected a handler, you have somebody that can do it?
We do. He came to me, he's got over 10 years as a road deputy with us, so that's always my first thing. I have a lot of young people talk to me, it's like, "First, I need you to be a good deputy, then we'll go on to learn something else." But this guy's got 10 years with, over 10 years with us on the road, plus time in the jail. I'm not, you know, looking for him, nor is he planning on leaving, so I feel pretty solid there that he's gonna be a good handler, he's motivated, and, you know, the dog is the right dog, and then the right person to handle the dog. You know, those are the key components to this, to make it work.
But this is gonna give the dog the training, where they match the dog to the handler, and the best for the dog, so the dog has a protection vest. But the main thing is that it's gonna be pre-trained and the training for the handler, that's the main expense. If you look on the back sheet, there's like an item list.
It's pretty lengthy to make it work right. There's a lot to it, and we're fortunate, because we can reduce some of that. We do have a guy that trained dogs in the Air Force, was a previous handler that can do continual training and certifications, but this initial training is gonna be, what is it, six weeks, I believe, at the kennel. We've selected a kennel that we'd like to use, they're very well-known, they have good dogs, they sell dogs to all across the country in the military and...
And they're in Indiana.
And they're in Indiana.
I see that down here at the bottom, you didn't attach, it says it's attached, but it's, that's one of the sheets we're missing?
Um, no, this is why I didn't have it, I didn't have it. I had heard you just the estimated expense ledger, but I have copies of the other stuff if you'd like to see it.
That's fine. Have you had some discussions with council members, or the council?
We go to the council next.
Okay. You have a thought about future expenses, about support of the program or anything?
No, not at this point. And as far as the future expenses, as far as the veterinary care and food, and that, we'll probably put it in next year's budget. We got some other stuff we can work with and cover for 2025. That's, not to minimize it, but that's small potatoes compared to this, and even if we need to just ask for commissary money to do it, you know, it's very doable, we're talking about a few thousand dollars. This is the huge hill to get over at this point. It is, it is extremely expensive, no doubt. You could buy a car for it, you could put a K-9 program together for it.
And it's not so much the cost of the dog, it's the cost of the training, that's the biggest, way more.
Yeah, two-thirds of it is training and equipment.
You said we had three dogs in the past, and we quit that program, do you know what happened before?
We had, no, we had, it's been about three years since we've had a dog. We've never had, we've only had one K-9 since.
That's all we've ever had?
Right, and the dog just got old.
Okay.
They have about a six-year working life if they stay healthy. Now, each dog is their own unique animal, and some will do a little bit more, some will do a little bit less.
Okay. And we just never did pick up on it when that dog was?
No, the handler at that time was pretty much already, he did it in the Air Force, he did it, you know, for us, and he was to the point where he had some other things going on in his life that really wasn't doable. But he's excited to be part of this as far as the training, he's a very good dog trainer. He's been involved with that pretty much his whole military and law enforcement career. So that's a big positive that a lot of agencies don't have.
You have any other questions?
Well, it's good, we can afford it.
Sounds like a great program to me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we've got Green County Sheriff excess vehicle bids. The sheriff came to us a month or so ago with some excess vehicles to sell. He did put a minimum on some of those, so we'll see what we've got. I think we've got four bids, it looks like. First bid's from Andy Spencer. He is bidding on the 2014 Ford Explorer, and his bid is $1,827. I do believe the minimum bid on that vehicle was $1,700, so that bid does meet the minimum. This next bid's from Adam Adcock. His bid is $4,060, and I'll have to look up within numbers to see which one this is. This is for the 2016 Ford Explorer. It also meets the minimum. I know this turkey, I've been in it.
Yeah, it does. He just ripped the end of that off. Like a kid at Christmas time.
This bid's from Ringwood Motors. And it is, this was an email bid. And they're bidding on all three vehicles, on the 2014 Explorer, a bid of $1,075, so it does not meet the minimum. The 2016 Explorer, they bid $3,780, and they've also bid $3,780 on the 2017 Explorer.
Did you say it was Ringwood Motors?
Yes.
Ringwood, Illinois.
I think they bought one in the past. It sounds familiar.
This bid's from Dakota Michael. He's bidding on the 2017 Ford Explorer, an amount of $5,237.38. So it looks like to me that Dakota Michael is the high bidder on the 2017 Explorer. I believe Andy Spencer's the high bidder on the 2014 Explorer. Probably had a bid on the 16.
We did, they had a Madcock.
Yes, $4,060. He'd be the high bidder on the 2016. So Heather, if you would like to contact those successful bidders and let them know, I will take care of signing the titles before I leave the building today.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next, we have Human Resources with their Toshiba agreement for your printer.
Oh, morning.
Good morning.
I'm just seeking approval for my copier for my office. Michael gave me a small scanner printer, but for making my handbooks, I can't do front-to-back copies, and Heather is gracious enough to let me use hers for the time being. Did you guys all give the agreement?
I think we've all seen it, standard Toshiba book.
Yeah, book. But I have enough budgeted in my budget for 2025. He just wants to get the machine ordered, he thinks that takes a couple of months, so it'll be here the first of the year, but I have enough in my budget to cover it, so...
Questions, comments? I'd entertain a motion to approve the Toshiba agreement for Human Resources.
So made. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll go with you after.
Yes, I'll sign that after the meeting. It's too long to sign now. Next, we have the Seventeenth Amendment to the ARPA Plan. This has been ongoing for seventeen amendments. This will be our final amendment to the plan. I think everybody's seen it. This should kind of clean up the ARPA plan to make sure we meet the deadline by the end of the year. So I would entertain a motion to approve the Seventeenth Amendment to the ARPA Plan.
So made. I'll second it.
All in favor? Uh, next, I've got some department head reappointments. Richard Nichols has agreed to be reappointed as a Veteran Service Officer. If there's no objections, I would entertain a motion to approve Richard Nichols as a VSO.
So made. Second.
All in favor? Tim Barker has agreed to continue as Courthouse Maintenance Superintendent. Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Tim Barker as the Courthouse Maintenance Superintendent.
So made. Second.
All in favor? Roger Hamilton has agreed to continue as Highway Superintendent. Hearing no objection, I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Roger Hamilton as the Highway Superintendent.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor? We'll move on to our regular Commissioner's Board Appointments. Pete Halsted and Tim Abbott have agreed to reappointment a Drainage Board. Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to reappoint both members.
So made. Second.
All in favor? Brent McKinney has agreed to reappointment on the Alcohol and Beverage Board. Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Brent McKinney.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor? Mike Turner, Alan Toon, and Scott Olfant have all agreed to continue with, on the Regional Surin District. Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to reappoint all three members.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? We also have, and I haven't talked to John about that, I haven't talked to him personally, but I know he's definitely interested in the reappointment to the Westgate Authority. I would entertain a motion to reappoint John Minch to the Westgate Authority.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? And Scott Carmichael, Josh Riggins, and John Minch have all agreed to be reappointed to the Redevelopment Commission.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? This will be continued with our next meeting and probably several meetings to come, reappointment and appointment of Commissioner Board Appointments. I got a text from Breanne, says she will not be attending this morning. County Attorney, what do you have this morning?
Got a few things for you this morning, but all of them fairly routine. The first, I know that I circulated among you, it's a contract between the Clark's Office and Malinowski Consulting. This is usually on a two-year cycle, which is what this is on, and it has to do with 4D recovery and tracking. They've always done a good job, the county's been with them for quite some time now, and the Clark's Office is seeking approval of a contract that will run through the end of 2026.
I think we've all seen this.
Yes.
Same, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Next item. Annually, we approve a contract between the county and the sheriff in lieu of the various statutory fees that the sheriff would otherwise be entitled to. It's that time of year again, your approval is needed, the council's approval is needed, and then the sheriff will sign off when the council has approved. This is a statutory determination, and in this case also recognizes the number of years of service to the county the sheriff has, so it's actually a little bit higher than the statutory amount. That's what the council agreed to. And so you all should have seen that contract, and we're pressing your approval today so we can meet the council on the 60.
I've seen that. Has the sheriff agreed to it?
Yes, I believe so. Sheriff?
Yes, it looks hard to me.
Okay. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the sheriff's contract.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
The commissioners solicited from R.C. Engineers a court for design and supervision services related to the exterior courthouse envelope. You have some plans for protection of the building upcoming, I believe in 2025. R.C. has agreed to provide the services and supervision necessary for that project at a fixed fee of $70,000. And John Seast, one of their principals, has already signed the agreement. If it is acceptable to the commissioners, I believe you've seen this agreement as well, then we're just in search of your approval.
Questions, comments?
No, I think you'll try to do a good job.
We have all seen that, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
So made. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
The next item came late, and therefore a copy of it is in front of you, although I believe we've discussed it before. This is from a company called Analyze that provides DNS services to our IT department. We've hit a limit on what the original contract was able to do, and the contract needs to be expanded. I worked with the company principal to get the contract adjusted to include terms that were necessary for Kelly to have in the agreement, as well as shifting venue for any disputes to Indiana. I believe Michael has the funds in his budget necessary to do this, it is in the need. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have funds to cover, so it's not really an issue. I'm running additional money.
I always lack it, Michael, when you say you have the funds and you don't ask me for any.
So we just need approval.
I read about it here briefly, and I don't understand if Ed knows what we're doing.
Yeah, we're just outgrowing our old system. And we have more accounts trying to log on than what we have DNS number available.
The pricing seems fair to you.
Yeah, yeah. I never understand the pricing on this kind of stuff. But it doesn't seem how.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I'm fine.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the Analyze agreement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
The next item didn't make it onto the formal agenda. But our ambulance director has surplus property that he requires that he's seeking permission to dispose of. And with your permission, I'm going to yield the floor to him, but I can talk about that briefly.
Morning.
Morning, Deb.
We have some old stair chairs that really have no value. We replaced them a couple of years ago. They've just been sitting in the office, and as we move, they're getting in the way. There's an old cot that doesn't have a lot of value. I found a new one, just like it. To compare it to, they wanted $1,200 for a brand new, with the paper still on it. So a lot of things, as we move, we're finding that we don't need anymore.
Do you have any other organization that would be interested in those?
My goal, if you guys agree, would be to donate them to like the volunteer fire departments and want them.
I would think that would be a very good use for them.
And then whatever they don't take, we can sell for whatever we can get out of them.
Yes, Marvin.
I just wanted to know, with regard to top volunteer fire departments, did statute requires that they first be offered to the departments within the county? Maybe that was planned.
Yeah, they're also wanted to emphasize that that is a statutory requirement. I think Green County departments will probably take most of it. It's hard to say.
You're going to be the one to decide which department to get them?
Ah, yeah, or the board, I don't know. We could let the board decide.
It's hard to me.
I don't. I'd like for the EMS board to decide that, actually.
And I don't know, I kind of put some feelers out, and there's really only one or two that was interested. But if it gets to be, or there's a lot, we could take it to the board meeting.
I just want to be careful. I'd like for, if they all need one, I'd like for them all to get one, or whatever we're going to do.
Several departments already have them.
And that's fine, just.
I know like Center is interested in one for their ambulance. And then we can sell whatever's left, or there's not much value to them, but somebody will have it, sure.
Well, I would entertain a motion that we allow Deb to disperse the access equipment the best way that him and the EMS board determine.
I'll make that motion, as long as EMS board approves it, whoever we give it to. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
That concludes what I have, although I believe Michael may have something to do with making the ones be agenda.
Okay. Give me just a minute, Michael, if you don't mind, we'll get you during the elected official and department head comments, if that's fine. I'd like to move on to our, Marvin, if you're finished.
I am, thank you.
Discussion item I have today is Board of Commissioners reorganization. And I don't want you two guys to jump all at one time.
I can clear it up real quick. I think since the election's over, I think that the two of you have that mandate. And I make a motion that we proceed in 2025, the same as we are in 2024, to the same officers. Please second that, Marvin.
Any other discussion? You know, that does require a second.
I'm waiting. I can second that if you'd like.
It doesn't work quite that way.
Oh, second motion. Thank you.
I have a motion to second for the Board of Commissioners to say the same in 2025 as they have been in 2024. All in favor?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Do we have any elected official or department head comments this morning? Michael, that's you.
Morning.
Morning.
So, the thing I kind of talked about is, or kind of talked about is over at the new ambulance site, we're looking at getting brand-new equipment out there for their network. I believe we're getting internet ran in here shortly. But they're going to need network equipment, firewall, network switch. And running those connections into it so that, like a Miranda, can have computers and a wireless throughout the building. I have Jared here from Endeavor, he's one of the vendors that's trying to quote out for equipment out there. And I was supposed to have something back from Matrix, but I haven't got an updated quote. I have kind of an older quote. But we're looking at trying to get equipment out there. And I know that you like it when I say I have funds, but this one.
You're saying that you let me down?
Let me down this time, I apologize. And I also don't believe I've gotten this to Marvin yet either, as an official thing yet either, so. But for, at our ambulance site, a quote here I have from Endeavor. We're looking at $8,677.57. And that would be for the firewall and the networking devices, the wireless, and also installation and configuration services. And they will also connect them to the courthouse with our tunnel so that they can still access their profiles and stuff like that, too.
That's the access points?
Access point, everything, anything networking related out there that they would need.
So that's all in, all done? Price?
Yeah, all in on that price, like $8,670. And I can't quote what Matrix will have. I know that what they gave me was a bit cheaper, but it was also, I need to add equipment into it, so it's going to make that price higher, so I can't say for sure what Matrix is going to come back with. I like the price that Endeavor's given us, so I'd like to give them a shot, if possible.
This is your bailwix, so.
Yeah. I'm going to tend to agree, we do a lot of work with Matrix, and we'll continue to work with Matrix, but the price is out now. I don't think it's fair to, I'm not sure that it's fair to go any further with that. And I do think this is a pretty good price. And Endeavor is the only one, only internet company that decided to work with us over there for installation of the internet.
That means a little something to me, that.
Well, yeah, I haven't seen any of this, I assume Ed's looked through this and you're.
I have looked through it, and I wasn't quite prepared to go this far because Marvin hasn't seen it yet, so. But yeah, I have looked through it, and it does include even to the firewall. And that wasn't answered in the quote there, but it was answered this morning. We'll get that out to both of you, to Marvin, and then, of course, Marvin will need to approve it before Nathan can sign it, but.
Would you be okay with letting Ed and Marvin work that out?
Yeah. I mean, because it's.
The timeline.
It's all great to me. Yeah, it's all great to me, I don't know if it's.
They've already got the conduit installed up to the building, bored underground, and they're ready to pull the cable, and that's scheduled for installation on the 13th of December.
Equipment's available, then? We're not talking about long lead time for equipment. What was that? The equipment that you're going to need, there's not a long lead time where.
Through pretty typical lead times, I would say thirty days is kind of what we estimate on.
So you're not sure you could get it down by the end of the year, then?
We can try our best, certainly. I have not heard anything, I don't purchase the equipment, so I've not heard anything about delays. Typically won't be quoted, it's equipment that's in stock and at the ready, so. Otherwise we find an alternate.
I hate to put that off, but we would, Ed and Marvin, work that out, why? I'd be all in favor of that.
Just to clarify, once the internet's installed, you will have internet. This would be an aside, so there'd still be access to internet even prior to the network being built out. It just wouldn't be as expansive.
Wireless.
Right.
Couldn't connect back to here.
Wish we could always give, like VPN access, kind of the remote work from home that we do. We can set up something like that if they need to access stuff. That would be, that could be a temporary solution in the meantime.
Yes, we'd like it up and running as soon as we can.
Marvin, do you have any concerns?
No, not really. The lowest price is not always the best or most compliant deposit. And so, at this point, as Ed said, if it adds out the bag, and if Ed's satisfied, I will satisfy. There's no question that we need to move forward on this as quickly as possible. We can have the ambulance service being built out, appropriate connection, and without protection through hardware fire, it's just. And everybody who's working there is going to require some access to. So moving forward would seem to be within reason.
I would entertain a motion to approve with the confirmation from Ed and Marvin that everything is good in the, with the language in the contract, and authorize the president the authority to sign that agreement when it's ready.
Make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor? But let me get this right, you want me to pay for this, right?
It would be nice.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Heather, that expenditure will come from Q cap. Well, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
I wanted to let you know that I have accepted a promotion. And so, starting in January, I will be transitioning to campus. I'll be working from.
To where?
Well, my job will be at campus, but I'll be located here.
Oh, you said Kansas.
No, campus. I'll be working for the director's office. So, most likely, Deli will be replacing me as county extension director. I didn't know that for sure, that there might be an interim from another county. But I just wanted to let you know I've really enjoyed working with you for the past twelve and a half years, and.
I've really enjoyed you being here.
I will still be around, but it's.
Yeah, but I hate to lose you in your current position.
It's emotional, but.
I feel as though you've been a huge benefit to the community.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm going to miss you a lot.
I will miss it, too. It's very good for my family.
Yep, stay in touch.
I will.
Go. Good luck with the new job.
Yeah. It's been a pleasure.
But I will, I'll be transitioning through January, so I won't disappear. And I'll bring her over, and if it ends up that she's the one, I'll make sure she knows she's.
Great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have any other department heads or elected officials this morning? Yes, sir, Michael. What'd you forget?
I apologize, I forgot about the Event Center. Their equipment replacement. I know that, I believe that we've kind of talked about looking at new equipment out there. I have not gotten one back from Matrix on a quote on that either. And I have not got one back from Icon, but I have one here from Endeavor as well. And they have been doing IT out there in the past.
If nobody else minds, I'd like to hold off on that just a little bit. On the Event Center, one thing is, I'd like to get everything completed out there. We will have a walk-through for a final punch list tomorrow at 2:00. So, if you can hold off on that. Couple more weeks anyhow.
Trying, can you send it out to us before our next meeting? Yeah, I'd like to look at it.
Thanks, Michael.
Pretty sure he's in.
One more try? Oh, okay. Do we have any public comment this morning? Commissioner Michael, you have any announcements this morning?
I don't.
Commissioner Graves?
Do we need to make a motion for this sheriff's bids? Do we have to have a motion for that?
Okay. I would entertain a motion that we accept the high bidders on the sheriff's access vehicles.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
No, I don't have any.
Our next regular monthly meeting will be December the 17th at 9:30 a.m. in this room. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made. Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming.